Good evening, everyone. Calling the meeting of the eight town regional school district planning board to order at 5:32 PM. Roll call attendance. Charlie?
Yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Is Tom Burkle here? Yeah. Uh, Dad?
Here.
Peter? Peter, I saw you. There you are. Um, Steve?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Kim? I saw Kim. Uh, John? John Silbert?
Here.
Uh, Susan?
Here.
Tara?
Here.
There you are. Uh, Nancy? No?
I don't see her.
Uh, Bonnie?
Here.
Nadine?
Here.
Colin? Um, Bill? Patrick?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Marie?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
And Andy?
Hi.
Okay, did I miss anyone? Okay, we've got a forum. The Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee has scheduled a meeting for 6:30 this evening. So in order to accommodate them and make sure that they are able to weigh in on the presentation of the Educational Quality Subcommittee Recommendation, I'm going to move to the end of the meeting, the approval of the minutes and the project manner, project manager chair update. Um, but I am going to start with public comments. I think it's important that we allow those to happen, so. Uh, I see two hands up. Uh. Peter and Susan, so why don't we start with Peter? Most. Peter, if you could introduce yourself. Uh, just briefly before you get started, but I'm recognizing you first.
Um, thank you. Uh, Peter Most, um, uh, Great Barrington Concern Citizen. Uh, I've been watching, following the consideration of the school district merger for some time, and I had have a few thoughts for your consideration. You should know at the outset that I favor merger of the districts. Uh, twice in my professional career, I've been involved in the merger of organizations, and I appreciate it is very difficult. Uh, factions form that only want to focus on the pros and factions form that only want to focus on the cons. Once you found your faction, you you begin to refuse to hear from the other side. Uh, lines once drawn, we all know are hard to erase. In in my experience, it becomes very difficult to accept the other side's position. Uh, but please, if you've been dead set against the merger of the districts from the start, and if you've refused to see that the plans have changed to accommodate the community's concerns, I'd ask you to consider now with a fresh eye that the merger may really be what is best for the community. And and please, I understand that my experience with business mergers is nothing compared to what's at stake here. There's a lot more at stake here. At stake is the community's commitment to provide the best educational opportunities to the broadest group of students. I'm convinced that the breadth of the curriculum that can be offered from chapter seventy-four being significantly enhanced to the college preparatory classes makes the merger a necessity. The fact that the merged district can also offer more sports and more extracurricular activities is a positive. I have heard from families that there's some concern that maybe with a merged district, their child won't be able to be on the football team or the basketball team or the baseball team. I I understand that there are going to be more teams, and maybe the child should be on the ski team in any event. Not that there's anything wrong with skiing. And I've heard the argument that the district merger is only being proposed to facilitate the new high school. Well, the fact is the entire community, both districts, would be better off with merged districts and a new high school. And when the Commonwealth is offering over fifty million dollars, you need to take it. This isn't going to be offered again, not in not in a generation or more. It's very unlikely we will see an opportunity for these districts to provide a new enhanced building for all the students. So please support the district merger and please support replacement of the Monument Mountain High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Susan, can you introduce yourself? You're muted. Me? Do you mean?
Yeah. Hi, hi, everybody. Hi, people I know. Um, I'm Susan Engel, and I live in New Marlboro. Uh, my three sons went to both school districts. Not all at once, but um, across their their school lives. Um, and I've been a very involved parent in both school districts as a committee member and just an active uh, mom. And I love both school districts. Um, on top of that, I'm a professor of developmental psychology and I all my research is about schools, and I write extensively about schools. In fact, this year I spent the whole year traveling around the whole country observing schools, so. I'm happy to have this chance to speak. I speak first and foremost as a devoted member of the community and a devotee of both school systems. Um, some of my favorite educators anywhere work at these two schools. Um, and I agree with what the person before me said. It's incredible how polarizing this issue has been. And for those of us who love both schools, it's bewildering. Um, and it it can make people uncomfortable to say what they really think about this issue because they're so afraid of offending someone in one group or the other, and I'm just not going to accept that because I care too much about the broad population of children and families. Um, so I bring to this my my love of the neighborhood and my love of children in this community, but I also bring a fair amount of professional expertise. Um, and when the process started, I, you have to believe me, the people who know me know I can be very opinionated, but I had no opinion on this. I did not know what I thought. And that was a good position to be in because it meant that I really listened to everything that was said, all the information that was gathered by this group, but I did more than that because I'm a professor and I read a lot of papers about the educational impact of school mergers, both in this country and in other countries. And the combination of what I heard over this past few years of the committee and the reading I did led me to think of that they should merge, that they will be better off together. And two of the concerns that I've heard I want to address, and then I'll shut up. One is this this constant but slightly vague talk about two different cultures, which I have to be honest, I read, there's a great sense of culture, shared traditions, shared values, shared geography, but there's a bad version of culture that I think is what's behind this, which is a form of tribalism. Um, and it's great on the baseball field. It's great in a basketball game, although we all know when those two teams, this has happened in Berkshire County, merge because they don't have enough like for football or for lacrosse or for ice hockey, then they're one. And the idea that these two schools can't come together because their cultures are so different just makes no sense to me as someone who's lived here for forty years. Um, so I I and wouldn't it be better to discourage that form of tribalism? Wouldn't it be better to assume that all these kids can become friends with each other, learn together, that the teachers can work together? And of course, they can because I'm not the only family in the Berkshires who has sent my kids to both schools or has had kids move back and forth. So that's one issue. The other is the educational outcome, which is the thing you're talking about tonight. There is no one study of educational outcomes that you would all agree with or agree that the outcome they're looking at is the outcome that you value. And there are no studies that measure it as a distinct sort of piece of science that measure the outcome of this particular merger. How could there be? This is where we haven't done it yet. But there is also absolutely no evidence that putting these two schools together would lead to any decline on any educational measure. Um, whether it's test scores or how much kids like to go to school or how much belonging they feel or how much they get to engage in creative pursuits or how college oriented they get, none of those things will suffer in a school that's merged. And there's an ocean of research to point to that. Um, the the truth is the school should merge because they're too small and because there's no reason to keep them apart. And there's no indication that the school that comes together can't be the best of both of those schools. That's all in the doing, which this committee is not charged with. That has to do with who leads the school and what community members offer the school as they plan it. Uh, but there's nothing structural about putting these two schools together that could possibly lead to any kind of decline in educational value. And I would just ask that people who keep pushing about this question of whether there's what the educational outcome will be, better say what they what kind of educational outcome they have in mind because then you could look for the studies that address that particular educational outcome. So yeah, I'm super in support of the merger, and I I hope people will come together around this topic.
Oh, Lucy, you're muted. Thank you to Susan and Peter. I don't see any more hands up in the public comments. Really appreciate you're both taking the time to express your views to the full board and and glad to have those at the outset of this meeting. So thank you again. Okay, um, so we're going to move now to the presentation of Educational Quality Subcommittee Recommendation. And Jake, do you have something to set that up before we turn the floor over to Deb?
Yeah, I have a few slides. I'll go pretty quick. Um, just to kind of do a setup and remind folks of work that we've done um, that will then, I think, lead into Deb's comments and ultimately just a review of the document, if that's okay. I'm not going to go in slide presentation mode, and I will again share this deck with everyone. People have seen these slides before. They're not brand new. Want to remind everyone. I'm assuming you can see this right? Yes, Amanda, nod your head. You can see my screen. Good. Um, that I've shared this slide for well over a year now. And educational advisability is in our mandate as a board. Uh, so just a good friendly reminder that the work that we're going to be reporting on tonight is actually part of the statutory mandate that this board was established to tackle. Um, this particular slide comes out of the Ed Quality Presentation, which was done a year ago. I think it speaks to the comments that were just made by Susan around this idea of what is educational quality and can it be measured? Um, you know, what we, um, you know, this particular quote is from, you know, well-known educational researcher slash economist, um, who really talked about this idea of the challenges associated with developing, you know, solid measures of education quality. So in our report, which are linked down here, um, if you remember, we had hundreds of indicators that we provided to everybody. And again, as as we said in the report, this particular indicators really need to be prioritized in terms of what folks, what resonates with folks in terms of the things that you would like to see reflected in the school. Um, I just did a quick, quick snapshot of some research work that's out there, and there's an incredible amount of research, as Susan pointed out, depending on what you want to look into. If it's a reading program or how you organize the school day. Um, these are actually some of the resources that we've used throughout the last year and that you've heard about. So it was just kind of a a quick reminder, and all these links are live. People want to go deeper and poke around a little bit. There's also quite a few models. Um, when we think about school reform and how to organize schools, and this is not a new phenomenon in the business of education, in the field of education. Um, as you as as is highlighted on this particular slide, Mount Everett was a coalition of essential school schools at one point. And Monument pretty uh, right now is involved in the Spring Point Initiative and using their standards or using their standards to audit how they're doing. So the idea here is that there's no one set model, um, but a variety of models that can be considered as optimal for a particular school or a district. Um, this vision here is just an example of what five high schools in Berkshire County are working on right now in in terms of the portrait of a graduate. You'll see how, you know, the aspirations related to that go well beyond what we think about historically in terms of academic outcomes and go well beyond what kids would be able to do as they engage in in work and life. The next two slides were slides that came out of a design process that we uh, were supported, was supported, a visioning process related to the to the new high school. It was supported by the Bar Foundation, and we had a presentation made by Matt Polarski and Michelle Phillips. That presentation can be linked down here. Um, but you know, generally, they were asking, you know, what what kinds of experiences, expectations, priorities, and assets exist in the districts? And then how do we set some design priorities? And I'm taking a really, really long slide deck and thinning it down to just a couple of slides. But they settled on some design priorities, all woven around this notion of twenty-first century skills related to personalized learning enrichment experience, more hands-on learning and and more choices as students are tracking through high school and thinking about um, their world beyond high school post-graduation. These are just reflected here in terms of tiles and sort of explaining, um, in, you know, a simple phrase what those particular um design priorities mean. And again, if you go to the slideshow, you can get more, and somebody's seen this presentation, but I just want to refresh everyone's memory that this work had been done. In addition to that, we did put together a vocational CVTE um, advisory group made up of folks from the community. I've sent that report to you all. It's also linked on the slideshow, and it's on the website now. This particular snapshot is of a couple of the tools that we created to look at the various um, types of um, chapter seventy-four, which are vocational programs or pathways might be offered in in a in a merged high school. Uh, and we used quite a quite a few criteria to sort of think about that, everything from where we had strong partners in the community, what the workforce needs were, um, how we develop programs that, um, you know, uh, you know, connected to um what's currently in the two high schools, so honoring um, the work that's occurring in the high schools currently, and then reflecting that in a merged high school. Um, but the bottom line in the report is, you'll see, is on the next slide, and I just put it on a single slide, which is that, um, we narrowed down the idea that um, some priority chapter seventy-four programs in keeping in mind that there's no way you could have nine, which are listed here. But we sort of organized these into, you know, high promised tier-one programs, a potential tier-two programs, and then some programs that we debated um, that we thought, hey, these would be really great to have, but you know, is there going to be enough room for that? We need to be do additional work. In addition to that, we looked at what are other ways that kids could in the high school have access to sort of pre-college pre-work experiences, and these occur through innovative pathways, electives that you'd offer in the high school. Um, and these are just some examples of things actually that exist in the two high schools currently. Both high schools have innovative pathways and a range of electives. And so the idea, again, speaking to the point made earlier, is you're drawing the best of the two high schools into the merged high school. Wanted just remind everyone that a year ago, when we did the Ed Quality Report, we identified some points of emphasis around that the two districts have a lot in common. They have unique strengths. There's absolutely room for growth and that there's room for reinvestment in additional educational enhancements. And again, that presentation can be linked right here. Also wanted to remind everyone that when we did the evaluation of the various models, that educational quality was in our matrix. It was a very important part of the work that our research team did when we looked at uh, the different qualities that would be reflected in the various models that we reviewed, um, obviously ultimately settling on the model of emerged region with a shared single high school and all the middle and elementary schools left as they are. Again, in that report, there's all kinds of data. Um, this is just a snapshot from, um, you know, the college completion data that um we shared with everyone in terms of where we start with kids graduating from high school and how how many actually earn a degree within six years and sort of thinking about what are the implications of that in terms of what programs we're offering in the high school. So that got us all the way down to thinking about where are there opportunities that can be accomplished in a merged district? We came up with a set of tiles, which I think are somewhat reflected in the Ed Subcommittee's work. Um, and so Deb will sort of review these with you in a couple of minutes in terms of the final product. But again, this is just sort of setting the historical context for you all. Um, one of the questions I get asked quite often has really been a question that we've been asked quite a bit recently is who makes the decisions on what the ed programs are? And I just want to really emphasize the point that the final decisions on this merged district will really fall in the lap of the school committee, both the appointed and the elective and the administrative teams. Um, but what's important is that this will all be informed by uh, it's it's not going to be created from, you know, a blank piece of white paper. There's work that's been done, including the program plans that exist currently in the two in the two districts. In addition to that, um, as part of the feasibility study for the design of the high school, there'll be an education program plan, and then, as I said earlier, we did some of that visioning work, which we believe will build into um, into the uh, the Ed Vision for the school. Um, I also want to just call your attention to just two citations from both the Department of Education and the Mass School Building Authority, which talks specifically about education programming as part of that process, and very specifically in the regulations for MSBA, there are ed program requirements which will occur as part of the design process. You know, an architect can't tell you what um, you you know, needs information about what you want in the building for he or she designs the building, and so that would be part of the feasibility process. But in addition to that, the Transitional School Committee um, will also be working on things like curriculum instruction and very very clearly here in this reference, it says, you know, there'll need to be a thorough and complete analysis of the curriculum of both member districts as you work towards alignment. So with that said, um, that's kind of a setup for some of the basics around the work that's been done, and I'm going to hand it over to Deb for a minute to, I think, make some introductory remarks. And then Deb, I have some slides just to tee up um, some of the key parts of of the findings that makes sense.
Thanks, Jake. Thanks, everyone. And and I I'm going to say before I go through my opening remarks that I really have not had a conversation with Susan Engel, but you're going to hear a lot of what she said in what I say. Um, and that is, so the Educational Quality Subcommittee has been meeting for the past two-plus years to consider how a merger would likely impact the quality of education for students in the eight South Berkshire towns. The committee commissioned two research projects from Hanover Consultants and received research reports and recommendations from the project management team that Jake just reviewed. The Subcommittee also considered educational visioning work done by Michelle Phillips and Matt Polarski, as well as the viewpoints of students from both school districts, which was gathered through multiple focus groups and surveys. And the input on the CVTE and innovative pathways was gathered from uh, community experts that were recommended by this committee. And this is the work that informed our discussions, and it's all available, as Jake showed you, with all those links on the website. While some urged us to deliver a recommendation for what the programming should look like, the mandate, as Jake just showed you, was that we had to recognize that we were what we were asked to do and what our ability as community members and not school leaders allowed us to do. And that was to determine whether, rather than how. We found, as as Susan alluded to, we found no research that proved that mergers of school districts generally either improve educational outcomes across all districts or that they lower those outcomes. It's too highly individualized. So we relied on the things that we know that a merger will do. It will create a larger, more diverse student body and faculty, and I have to qualify that by saying even together, we are far from large, but we will be larger than we would be if we were separate. It'll increase academic and extracurricular offerings and supports for our students. It will increase salaries for teachers in the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. And it will increase, it will allow the offering of expanded chapter seventy-four and innovative pathways. We also relied on the knowledge that the proposed model assumes the maintenance of all existing programs and services. So we were clear that we weren't going to lose something that we already had. Um, so recognizing that our charge was to determine whether a school district merger could have a positive impact on the education offered to the students in the eight towns. We produced a document that with majority support outlines the potential benefits to the students and staff of a merged district. It also acknowledges the challenges that need to be attended to in order to do the merger well. We recognize, as Jake just pointed out, that the decisions about curriculum and programs will be made by the new district educational leaders in concert with the new district school committee and guided by educational best practices as it is done now in both school districts. That won't change. Um, that's how it must and should be, as curriculum and programs must be flexible to change over time. So the combined mission in the document combines the language contained in the mission statements of both existing school districts. The guiding principles in the document naturally flow from those mission statements, and they come from the research team. And while not unanimous, the majority of the committee voted to recommend the merger from an educational perspective based on the preponderance of positive findings that we have in the chart. So if you want to put up pieces of the chart, that would be.
You can do that.
And I'm not going to read it word for word, but I I'll just sort of point out the highlights, and when we're done, happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
And Deb, don't panic yet. I will make this thicker.
Because I can't read anything on there.
How are we doing? Is that better for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the first page is the narrative and reflects most of what I just said. The combined mission, um, as I said, is literally the language that came right out of the two school district missions, and they fit together very nicely. Um, guiding principles. And um, so that that really, and then, as I said, our statement on the document is that, given the preponderance of positive findings, the committee recommends the merger from an educational perspective. So I'm going to go through the details of the pieces that we looked at in the chart. And if you scroll down, um, what you'll see in parentheses, it up. Stop.
My computer's tracking a little slow.
Okay.
A lot of stuff open.
Um, so the educate, what I've done in parentheses is is put in the language that Michelle and Matt used so that we were correlating with the work that had already been done in term conceptually. Um, so we, on the left side, we have potential benefits, and the right side is the areas that require attention, acknowledging that none of this is is just simple. It isn't that we waltz in and it happens, but we really need to pay attention to many things. But the big piece in terms of educational initiatives is more choices, more opportunities, the ability to offer more courses um, to have more students in a class. And while we always think about not wanting classes that are too large, particularly in high school where there's discussion going on, we also don't benefit from classes that are too small. Um, by freeing up space, we can offer electives more than one time, making them more accessible to students. We will have a larger and richer faculty cohort, so it will be a more, there will be more diverse backgrounds and perspectives. There will be more shared professional development and the possibility of more AP and advanced um, courses across all the grades in schools. Over time, the curriculum will be aligned and be aligned with national um, and state quality practices. Um, and we should improve our ability to retain and recruit um, quality faculty with with the um, the equitable salaries. The things we need to pay attention to are to maintain high school teacher loads at reasonable levels. We don't want to use the merger to overburden the teachers so they can't do their jobs well. We want to optimize high school class size, and that's that sweet spot between too small and too big. Um, and to make sure that we um, maintain the high school mentor-to-teacher student ratio so that students get the attention that they need. Um, college and career opportunities, we have the chapter seventy-four document, which or the CVTE document, which really made a point of not just looking at chapter seventy-four, but looking at what is the optimal way to offer a variety of courses of study. And um, you can look at the whole document. In this document, I simply listed the, very similarly to the slide that Jake had up that just had CVTE, what, what the recommendations were. This document also compares it to what we have presently. The concern as we go to build the high school and the MSBA will help us do this is to not overbuild, but really right-size the. High school for the population that we have. And to make sure that we're designing programs and spaces. That will be able to keep up with that technology needed to keep those programs running well. The last piece under education is the expanded early childhood opportunities for children age three and four. Which will create equitable learning opportunities across all the towns. Will provide support for, for staff and faculty who have young children, allow for early diagnosis of educational needs. Improve learning outcomes for participating students. There's a lot of evidence that, that stands behind early childhood education. It can serve as a Chapter 74 vocational training site. And expand support for parents of small children also. Under access, which is supporting individual student needs. There will be more out of school and extracurricular opportunities for students and that is sports, its clubs, its arts, its theater. Recognizing that there may be more competition for all of those activities and we need to look at how to assure equal acts. Equal opportunity and equal access for all students. The support services for students will expand, whether it's. English language learners, special education students, people with behavioral health or, or more intense guidance needs. It will allow create greater opportunity for bilingual support staff, more diverse staff for different types of learners. And better mental health wellness and guidance offerings. Because the school is larger, there is a fear of loss of one-on-one relationships and that needs to be attended to. But we, the ratios shouldn't, should not, should get better if, if anything, but they certainly won't get worse so that, that students should still have the same one-to-one access. And as these things are expanded, we really do need to pay attention to multiple cultural perspectives. Lastly, in terms of access, a larger, more diverse student body, which will allow young people to have the opportunity to. Create broader cultural inclusion and more people, simply more people power for marginalized groups. And again, to guard against that fear that individual students may get lost. And I do want to stress every time we talk about the size of this new school district. It's still considered a very small school district. The transition is going to be challenging. And the positive, the potential benefit is that everyone gets to, every community gets to be involved in the planning. So that if there are needs that are different or perspectives that are different, we're going to build a high school. That starts with acknowledging all of that and, and how we work together. There, the issues to pay attention to are, as I said, transitions simply are difficult. There is resistance on the part of some staff or faculty to be part of a larger district. And that's going to take. Lot of communication and working together. And that we really need to pay attention to that first high school, first one or two high school classes because. It's going to be new and we. Want them to feel supported in, in that process. The last category was culture and identity and Susan touched on that briefly and in, in her piece. And it really is for everyone, the opportunity to build something new together, to build. To build a. Cultural, a cultural Southern Berkshire identity, since students do. Even now move back and forth between schools, families move back and forth between towns, it will really allow. And encourage. People to feel like they belong to a single larger community. And we need to be aware that there is a perceived loss of separate. School and district identities and town identities. And I think that this really represents an opportunity for us all. To recognize that rural South Berkshire County. Is a unique area and we're all part of this very unique. Southern Berkshire County. And together we can make the most of it. So. There will be, we didn't approve the agenda, but there will be listings of the sports that are listed now and the sports that. You know, at what, what's done as co-op teams and what might be available. What is available now in terms of electives and course offerings and. So, so there will, there will be charts that put all that information together. They have not been completed. But that's basically the document that we want to present and I'm happy to answer questions.
I don't see any hands up Deb for questions, so maybe we. Open the floor for discussion and. Ultimately a vote on whether to accept the recommendation of the Educational Quality Subcommittee.
Don.
Don. You're, you're muted, Don.
Just to put it on the table, I'll move that we accept the report.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion to accept the recommendation and report seconded by John Silver. Okay, discussion Patrick, I see your hand was up first.
I just wanted to thank Deb, Bonnie, Susan, Sarah, Nancy and James for the outstanding work that went into this committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see a hand up. At Southern Berkshire, I don't know whose hand that is, but. Go ahead.
Jim Capiza. Dr. Engel said that she was former professor of developmental psychology. I am a former professor of school psychology. And I just want to say, as I've said before. That. There's really. No basis and. And Dr. Engel said this too, to, to absolutely predict. That merger of the school, of the two districts will improve the quality of education. All of the things that Deb talked about are possible good outcomes. I'm not arguing against that. I'm just saying that it's not. There's nothing. In the research, there's nothing in, in what you presented that says these are predictable outcomes. So I think that. It's slight, it's misleading to the voters who are going to have to decide this and have meetings. To say, well, if we merge, the quality of education for your children will be better. It might be or it might not be, we can't predict that.
Dan.
I think that's exactly what we're saying to them. These are the, these are the things that are happening. That. Make it possible for us to make it better. If we stay separate, there's no guarantee that it will get better or that it will get worse. But we do know things like. Having more students and, and, and that's all we're saying to the voters. We are not promising. We are telling them it is up to. The educational leaders in the school committees who we trust right now. With, to determine how to do it best. It is up to them to figure out. How to take the best advantage of these potential opportunities, but we do know that the. The. Coming together of the district increases these particular possibilities and that is all we're telling the voters. I don't feel that we are misleading them. At all. Nobody came out and said, we promise you that we are going to have A, B, C and D and your child will do better. In a merged district, but we are saying that. These are the reasons why. We can do better if we come together. So that's my response to that.
Okay. I, I see Don and Peter's hand up and someone on the school committee, so. Why don't we start with Don and then. Maybe the school committee can identify whose hand is a.
I just wanted to note that. There is at least one very large and respected study. About how the size of the school, the high school affects the ability of the school to educate the students. And it clearly found that one in excess of 500 students. One like the school we're trying to, to. Propose is advantageous in general to students.
Thank you, Don. Peter.
I just wanted to reinforce a point that. As you look at what we have learned over our time together and it's documented in the trends, you know, our, our student census is going down in each of our districts. And there is a scale that's necessary to sustain and enhance educational opportunities by census. And so. I think one of the propositions that I always come back to when I think about educational quality is yes, it's to enhance and I think we can do more together. As Deb has pointed out. But there's also an important consideration of just sustaining the educational quality that both districts. Value and have invested in because of the declining enrollment that we project. And so I think that's important to, to, to reinforce.
Okay, Bonnie, go ahead.
Thank you Lucy. I will say that. My issue, and it could be a complete misinterpretation of our mission. I will give that. Is that a lot of what came out in this report. Is something. That we could have done. Maybe two years ago with the information that we had. And. My hope was always that we would be more visionary. And given some of the information that's come out, I know the work we've done here. In Southern Berkshire, and I'm sure that they do in Berkshire Hills. Is looking at the kind of innovation that. Will make our communities richer in terms of education. And though the report is. I will give full credit for the fact of summarizing what existed. I had really hoped. That we would be leading whoever is going to be taking over with the Transition Committee if this goes through and whatever new leaders we have. For a more. Expansive. Twenty thirty view of what education could be. And I'm sorry, I do not believe that this report has it. And, and that's where my doubts come in.
Thank you Bonnie. Hi, Andy.
Yeah, excuse me. Thank you for. Bearing with my absence, but came back from a business trip to Paris and I've been on flat on my back all month. So. I just had a point of order, actually. I want to be sure because it feels like this board. You know, I'm a, I'm a stickler for. These, these meeting things. It feels like this board is having a joint meeting with the. The school committee in Southern Berkshire. And I mean, I, I don't know who's a member on the, I, I mean, who has been part of the eight town. Who's speaking? I know Bonnie, I know you Bonnie, I know you.
No, 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 we were only, they were, the directions were that I sent out. That this meeting was for the five members on the regional planning board. So you have four of the five here.
All right.
No other school committee members are here until the six thirty. School committee meeting and if anyone does show up, they are instructed to be in the public and not to be sitting at the table. So apropos of your concern, this was dealt with.
Okay, I accept that.
Good.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion that's on the table before we vote? Okay. Not seeing any more hands, so. Let's vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
George?
abstain.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter? Peter? Thank you. Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kim? John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Para?
Yes.
Nancy's still not with us, right?
Correct.
Bonnie?
No.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, 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 you're, you're, you're.
Patrick?
Yes. Floating twice.
Patrick's a yes. Michael?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you Patrick for sticking with us a little past six fifteen. I know you have to go. And thank you to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee members for. Sticking with us. All right, so. I think we should probably go to. The Project Manager Chair update next.
You don't want to do anything with regional agreement or no?
I mean, we've got 10 minutes. I mean, we could go to that and just hi, maybe we should, since we've got the school committee members for another 10 minutes, we can just highlight. What's in the, the revised draft.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Marie has her hand up. Marie?
I just might, I'd be really quick. I just really wanted to thank the Education Committee for all their hard work because I know. It's really hard to get your final product and to have everybody vote on it. And I just think they did a great job and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Marie. I share those, those congratulations to Deb and her committee. Okay, so. This draft, I, I don't know what happened to my draft line Jake, but it, it. It, it should show that the last draft that we circulated to the group was dated May 2nd. So this markup. Is, will show in red. What has changed since that May 2nd draft. All right, so let's start scrolling through. Some of the changes are just sort of drafting stylistic things, making sure that our. Definitions are consistent throughout the draft. They're not really substantive, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. But the, the new stuff.
You want to just queue me to a page so I don't make everyone dizzy?
Yeah.
This is one, I think, decision point here.
Yeah, that's a decision point that we've. Kept putting off and off. And this is the date. That sort of determines the grandfathering. Of students in their current schools. And any. Student enrolled in a district elementary school. Not in closest proximity to their residence as of this date. May elect to remain at that school through all grade levels offered in the school and through associated middle grades. And the same thing for. Middles, students in middle schools. As of that date, they can stay in their middle school, even if it's not in closest proximity. So this is the intra-district. Choice provision. Intra-district choice provision. We've gone back and forth on what this state should be, and so what uh was proposed by Jake and seems a reasonable date. Is January one, twenty twenty five. Now that assumes. I'm sorry.
So sorry, I said so moved Lucy.
Okay, Nadine, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Um. That assumes we're going operational. Uh, with a merged district. July one, twenty twenty five, correct, Jake?
That's correct.
Okay, Bill?
Um, no, 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 no. What's my problem?
I think Bill, you're open in two places for some reason.
I don't know where the second place is.
Okay, now, now you're good.
I'm sorry.
All right, let's let's just hold for a minute. Amanda, can you get rid of one of Bill's personas? And get rid of one of yours?
What is going on? Do I have an echo right now?
No. How about uh Bill going out of the meeting, coming back in? Why don't we try that?
Okay.
Lucy, it's because Bill's an attendee and a panelist.
Right.
And I've tried removing the attendee and it goes away for a second and it comes back. It's very strange.
They'll show up as an attendee. Uh, that's better.
I think he's back.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
I'm sorry for that. I I probably screwed up.
No problem.
Uh, just a quick. Uh. Question about that date. Why make it in the big, in the middle of the school year? January first, why not make it at the, in the summer? Uh, before the beginning of of a school year? Do we necessar, do we needlessly complicate things? By having to change things around in the middle of the school year?
Jake, you want to explain the rationale for that?
Right, so on January one, twenty twenty five. There are still two operational districts, Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire. This would be parents signaling. Um, that they want to remain. In the school that there's current, that currently in. Um. When the district becomes merged. So what you're giving to the new. Merged administrative team is about six months notice to plan.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Russell? That's our council for those who don't know. Go ahead.
The the other uh reason for it is Desi requires you to notify them like seven thirty first. For chapter seventy purposes, so. They would have to pay, would have to comply that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on this before we take a vote on it? Don't see any hands. Does anyone else see any hands? Because I don't have the whole screen. Okay. Um. I'm gonna call for a vote. Um, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Abstain.
George?
Abstain.
Uh, Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kim?
Abstain.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Patrick still with us or did he jump off? It's off. Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Sarah? Yes, Sarah? Sarah's a yes?
Yes.
And Andy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. All right, let's go to the next um section. Jake?
Yeah, where do you want to be? Uh, I mean, I I think, I don't know if this, is this T O B new?
No, that's just a definitional thing.
All right, fair enough. Um, so we're.
I would, I would go to the um.
Point it.
Yeah, the methodology, so that's section six.
Right here.
So all of section six is new. That's all uh been been rewritten and I'm just, I'm just gonna walk you through how this section is organized. All right, so it begins with a definitional section. Of the terms that we use in this section to describe the methodologies. And then after you get through the definitions, the first section is how we're gonna portion capital costs. That are financed by debt. Right, so their capital costs financed by debt. That's in section B. And then their capital costs uh that are not financed by debt, and that's in section C. So B is what we've been. Uh, talking about for a long time, it's got within it. Categories of capital cost. So the first is the Southern Berkshire legacy debt. Okay? And so this section represents the decision that that legacy debt stays with Southern Berkshire. Um, then we've got the new high school debt in section two. And I think Jake's gonna have a slide that shows. How that methodology works and the language here is intended to reflect how that works. Then we get to in three town-owned buildings and town-owned buildings. Are defined as the uh buildings in Aggermont and New Marlboro, so that's a defined term. So how we deal with capital costs. Um. Financed. By debt uh for those town-owned buildings. And then we get to. Um. Other debt. That is again financed. Uh, capital costs. That's in paragraph four. So. B. Is. How we apportion capital costs financed by debt. C is how we apportion capital costs not financed by debt. D is our operating costs and that's got the two percent safety valve or smoother in it. E is apportionment of transportation costs and they're treated like operating costs, but Desi has told us we need to have a separate section. For transportation costs, so that's how, why we have a separate paragraph E. And then F is total assessment to each member town. So the total assessment is going to be the sum. Of the assessments under B. The. The. And E. And that's what. Paragraph F says. So maybe Jake, you could pull up that slide for capital costs, just so that we can remind everyone. How that works because it is confusing and our idea. Is to have attached to this regional agreement. A uh actually two appendices, one that illustrates the capital cost methodology. And the second one that illustrates the operating cost methodology. So people who are looking at this. Two, three, four years down the line and maybe weren't involved in these discussions. Can look at something, an example, an illustration of how this methodology works. And make sure they're understanding the language in the way it was intended.
We have to leave at this point. Thank you for the adjustment.
Okay.
We'll be able to get this, anyone who wants it afterwards.
All right, thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, thank you.
This is your one and Lucy?
Yeah, Jake, can you just walk the group through this? I mean, we've seen it a couple of times before. But it's something like this that I'm thinking we would attach. As an appendix, so people can really understand how it works with this example, right? This is an illustration of how it would work if the cost of the high school were a hundred million dollars. But it could be lower or higher, the same methodology would apply. And also. The MSBA anticipate, that's anticipated reimbursement, right? The forty eight point five two percent reimbursement for base aid, the six percent for regional incentive. We think those are the numbers, but it could be the base aid is a little higher, a little lower. Could be the regional incentive is a little higher, a little little lower. That's why we don't actually call out those percentages. In the document, we just describe them. As a category, right? So base aid, whatever that number is, is applied. To the ninety percent apportioned share of Berkshire Hills, six percent. Or whatever the regional incentive turns out to be is applied on the Southern Berkshire side, and then you get to the net number. So Jake, can you walk through that for the group?
Yeah, I mean, sure, you you just kind of did, but um I'll do it again.
Yeah.
Um. And I would just want to be reinforced what Lucy just mentioned, which is. From this entire slide, the methodology, the only two things. That make it into the regional agreement numerically are the ninety ten. And the one percent twenty thirty three to twenty thirty eight. Everything else, we're using illustrations. We're starting with a hundred million dollar high school. But then applying the ninety ten total cost of the high school. Um, to each of the districts and effects, Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire, and coming up with a total. Um, that is their, in fact, their liability, but then we're backing out. The MSBA reimbursements incentives based on um. What we describe in the regional agreement as base aid and regional incentive aid. These two numbers are not in the regional agreement because they're not settled. Um. And then, of course, that brings down total cost of the local level, which then gets translated to annual debt service, which again, Matt. Um, uh, calculated based on, I believe, twenty five years, three and a quarter, but Matt, correct me if I'm wrong there. Um, and then we have that shift of one percent. Um, off the debt, um, starting in fiscal year twenty thirty three, which is a year after. The current Southern Berkshire legacy, legacy capital liability. Um, is uh is closed out. Through twenty thirty eight, which ultimately gets you uh to in the neighborhood based on this model. Of an eighty five uh fifteen, eighty five point two, fourteen point eight. Um, dispersment, and then it shows you what those annual debt service would look like in FY thirty eight. So again, just to reinforce, you can't really work on numbers in the regional agreement. Um. Except for the fact that we know for sure that we're portioning out of the gate ninety ten. On the total cost of the high school. I do want to make one point, though, when I improve this in the. Regional agreement, there's something missing. And Lucy, I'm 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 sure you probably identified this, is that there could be additional incentives that the MSBA offers. And we wrote that into the agreement, so it is reflected in the agreement, but it's not reflected on the flow chart. If additional incentives were secured, they would be applied right here. So you'd have the total cost of the high school, you'd bring those uh those additional incentives in. And that would reduce the total cost of the pri, high school before you did the ninety ten. Um, and so I'll add that into the flow chart when we put this in as an exhibit.
And yeah, yeah, and the one other thing we need to. Clarify on this chart, the question was asked about, and it's a very good question. Is whether it's twenty thirty three to twenty thirty eight or twenty thirty three through twenty thirty eight. So one's five years, the other's six years.
Yep.
And we confirmed with Matt and that's how the arithmetic works. Right, that it's, it's actually six years of that one percent per year shift. That's how you get. To eighty five point two percent on the left and fourteen point eight percent on the right. So we need to clarify that. Because two is ambiguous, and so we need to. Make it very clear that we're talking about six years uh beginning in twenty thirty three. So. Uh, I saw George's hand was up and Don and Tara. So George, why don't you start?
Um, thank you, Lucy. Um. The last chart we saw. Uh, I think you were proposing to uh. Have his. Kind of an. Addendum that would be a kind of. Quick start for people to uh. Understand the formula that's used. Uh, and uh. As you know, there. I and some others. You know. Appreciate that formula, but really. Question the hundred million dollar. Price tag. But. It would be also very helpful. And I know the finance committee, subcommittee. Um, did uh. Also show. And I would urge and request that it show by town. What the. Annual assessments would be. And of course. The Southern Berkshire. Get. Which is. Frankly, pretty small at this point. Um. You know, it's paid off. Uh, and the twenty thirty three number realistically. I assume that's fiscal year. Twenty thirty three. I mean, the new high school. Wouldn't really be operative too many fiscal years before that. So I I I think it's important to provide clarity. To each town. That has to vote. On this issue. What uh best projections are, and I understand their best projections. And, you know, I compliment all the people that. Have been trying to make them. Because I'm impressed.
Thank you, George. Don?
Uh, Jake, could you bring back the the chart you just had on? I have a question about it.
Sure. One second.
And and before I I ask that question, I I want to comment on the one percent shift. Wha- what actually happened that at the. Finance Subcommittee was that we adopted two ideas that were inconsistent. Our idea one was that there would be a one percent shift for five years. Our other idea was that the total shift would result in fifteen percent. Because we were working with the numbers of ten percent to fifteen percent. So in fact. The finance committee did not resolve. Uh, that issue or that problem. Um. And uh it needs to be resolved here, but uh Jake, what I wanted to ask you, I really don't understand. Now we see the eight point eight percent and the ninety one point two percent. Uh, in that one per shift, one percent shift line. Why isn't, why don't we use those figures above? Why isn't it ninety one point two percent where you have ninety percent and eight point eight percent where you have ten percent?
You mean up here?
Yeah. I I I just don't understand.
Because that's not how we, I mean, you're you're actually starting with a ninety ten apportionment that when the aid gets applied, doesn't necessarily rule, you know, result in a pure ninety ten um allocation. I mean, Matt could probably tell you the math better. Matt, you on the line right now?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just um when you add the the um
Base aid.
Net amount, Don, after the application of the MSBA reimbursement. You add those two numbers together, forty one point four eight million and four million. The total is forty five point four eight million. So then you have to do a calculation. What does four million represent of that total as a percentage? And it represents eight point eight percent. And the forty one point four eight million represents ninety one point two percent. It's just the way the the math works. After you apply the incentives, and we talked about, right, right, um, Matt, we talked about doing it a different way at the Finance Subcommittee uh level. You remember those two columns in that spreadsheet that Matt presented, and we decided to do the column all the way on the right. And that's what's reflected in this slide where you do the ninety ten as the initial split. Then you apply the aid, and then you figure out what the total cost is at the local level. And so the ninety one point two versus the eight point eight represents the allocation across the two sets of member towns of the local level cost as opposed to the allocation of top, which is the apportionment of the construction cost of the school before you apply MSBA anticipated reimbursement.
I hope other people are better at that than me. Thank you, Jake.
Welcome.
Uh Peter Dillon.
Yeah, I I don't want to belabor this too much, and I've mentioned it in other contexts, but I don't think the this is accessible to most people, a- and I would recommend we lip it a little bit and and don't lead with the ninety ten, but but have the state contribution, whether it's the MSBA part or the regional incentive come out first and then work our way through it. I think it's a small tweak, and I think it could make the difference of this being um uh understood and accepted or not. So I'm happy to work on it offline a little bit, but I I I don't think the ninety ten tells enough of the story, and I don't think people have enough context to to get to the subsequent lines.
Well, we did, as I said, and Matt can describe it, we did look at it doing it a different way, and we decided on this approach in the Finance Subcommittee.
I I hear you, and I I respectfully disagree with the approach, and I think it's it's maybe the most significant piece in this whole puzzle. Um, so it it may make sense to look at it again or or to not look at it again, and that's fine, too.
When you do it the other way, the Southern Berkshire towns pay more.
No, I I I I I think the way it's presented, I'm fine with the math behind it. I think the way it's presented in this chart i- is not understandable to folks. I don't want the Southern Berkshire towns to pay more. I'm happy with the way we got to this. I think leading with the ninety ten doesn't um um explain it well.
It's optics. That's what you're saying, Peter. It's optics.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Matt, is there anything you'd like to add in terms of an explanation of this chart that hasn't already been said?
No, um, I think the way you explained it, Lucy was on, so unless there are further questions.
And the only, the only thing I'll just throw in there, and maybe this is what Peter's getting at, is do you describe what the local liability is towards the high school in terms of the what the towns are paying as a function of the total high school cost? So, you know, it would be, what, forty one and a half percent and four percent?
That's what I was trying to get at, Jake.
Right.
It's not just optics.
Um, Tara?
Um, I just, I had somebody come to me with page forty two and page forty eight. Page forty two is this page that we're looking at. And I real, I I understand this is the new high school amount. But they said, oh, well, the annual debt's, you know, two hundred and thirty six thousand. Um, where's the legacy debt? And I said, well, that's, this is the new high school amount. This isn't the legacy. And they were very confused and then got to page forty eight, which gives you the breakdown on new high school legacy and no additional debt. And I don't think they they didn't get it. They 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 just simply weren't getting how the amounts. Oh, well, now we're going to pay a lot more money. We're we're going to pay a lot more. Um, and then I, you know, I tried to explain that, of course, then it goes down after the legacy gets paid off, but they were very confused, so maybe they're the only ones. But I'm not sure now because by the time she got done talking to me, I wasn't sure I knew what I was talking about.
Yeah. Well, it's not easy, right?
Yeah.
And um I think what we have to keep in mind is uh we could have developed a methodology that's very easy to explain. It's one that Michael suggested at the very outset of the Finance Subcommittee uh deliberations on this, and that is we divide up the cost of the new high school according to how many students are in the school from the respective towns. Right? That's really easy to explain. It's really easy to understand, but it's not a fair result. So what the tension we had, right, was that we're trying to get to a fair result, and it requires some complexity to get to that fair result, and it's not easy language to parse through in a regional agreement. It's, I think, easier to see in this chart, but it requires people to dig in. Um, and those who do dig in, I think, do understand it, but I agree, it's a complex formula, it's a complex methodology, but it gets us to the rate numbers, and that was our primary objective.
Yeah, I I just think they were, you know, when they saw this, then they said, oh, two hundred and thirty six thousand. Okay, that's down from, you know, then you add the three hundred and whatever it is for the legacy debt at this point, and it's at five hundred. So, oh, my gosh, our, you know, our taxes are going to go up, our um, you know, that was, that was kind of the hysteria that I was hearing.
Yeah. And so just remember, um, as we're putting this illustration up just to help explain what's in the regional agreement. When we go out with a community education campaign, we're going to have those composite numbers available for each town, to George's point. We're going to have, based on our projections, we're going to have composite numbers that include everything, and we have presented those before. But those numbers are based on projections. They don't belong in a regional agreement. That would be totally bizarre to put into a regional agreement hypothetical numbers based on projections. But those numbers belong in the materials we present to the individual towns when we go out and and present the recommendation of the board if we get get to a recommendation to merge.
Well, I think what their thought was when they were thinking of it, and I've been trying to mull it in my head what they were thinking, is they were thinking that the legacy debt stays with Southern Berkshire. So we don't have an annual debt for the new school until twenty twenty three. I think that's how they were reading this. I I I'm not sure how quite how they were reading it, but they said, well, we've got the legacy debt, so we'll pay that off. We won't be paying the annual debt for the new high school, and we'll start paying really our share in twenty twenty three.
Twenty thirty three.
Twenty thirty three of the new high school.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that's what it was. I think that was what was being said, that trying to figure, kind of trying to mull it over and figure exactly what they got, what they, when they got it.
Okay, well, good to know that there's confusion there, and we need to focus on that when we go out with the community campaign. Deb?
I just want to, and I think we're finally clear that I that the issue isn't the payment schedules or the formulas, it's how it's being communicated, and that's separate from the regional, the regional agreement has to be as technical as it has to be and can't have the num- have estimates and all of that. But that we need to really be thinking about how it looks, and I think this speaks to what Peter Dillon was saying even, is that there's a better way to present it that will help people, not that there's anything wrong with the formula itself, and that we really need to attend to that when the time comes, so that people feel like they know what they're looking at.
Agreed. I think I think that will help.
Okay. Don?
So I'd like to make a suggestion to get there with respect to this particular uh uh thing that's on the board. You see the size of US of less MS MB anticipated reimbursement? Use that size in black for the hundred million dollar new high school, so it's small. And then the phrase less MSB anticipated, make that large and red. And also, I would put an arrow going from new high school at the top down to uh less MSBA. And that'll give it the emphasis that Peter's looking for, and Deb has mentioned.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea. Yeah, this this slide as an appendix is obviously a work in process, and um by the next meeting, we'll we'll take all the suggestions into account, and if Peter can help rejigger some stuff in a way that doesn't change the economics, that'd be, that'd be great. Okay, uh, let me see, who else? Uh, George, you have your hand up.
Um, thanks, Lucy. Uh, I just want to stress that annual town meetings are not about optics.
Point taken, George. Uh, Andy?
Well, I'll just step into that. Yes, it's all political, and that's what politics is. Yes, you present things in the best possible way, and that's optics, George. That's optics. Thank you.
Boy, we're getting philosophical tonight.
No, not philosophical. That's not votes.
Okay.
This is one other point is um I don't think Matt um taps himself on the back enough, but every single town's capital apportionment is calculated out on the worksheets that have been on the website for quite some time. So people do want to see what the liability is to their town, both on the new high school, on the combined effect of both legacy debt and new high school. It's there. Happy to show folks where it is, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, Jake, I I meant to uh pat Matt on the back.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't explicitly, but I do now.
You know, one of the things I will say just on this chart, I think it's a little lost, and I I don't want to um overinterpret what Peter said, um, is that the state is according to this model, is going to pay fifty five percent of the project. And I think that that's a pretty big deal as we tell the story.
Yeah, maybe that can be highlighted.
And I think, you know, what happens is with the ninety ten is people say, oh, we're paying ninety percent of the total project, and they're paying ten percent of the total party. It's not true. It's a, it's a, it, the partnership is three bodies. It's, you know, the Berkshire Hills towns, the Southern Berkshire towns, and the MSBA. Uh, and they're all contributing in a different way.
Yeah. And again, I think um Don's suggestion that we play with size and color here to emphasize some things is is a really good one. I think that might help with that issue as well. So um I do want to get to, I I know there's a lot of language there in that section, and you've had, what, a day to to noodle it, and you need more time. So as you, as you go through it over the next couple of weeks, if you've got any questions about it, please send them in to Jake, and we'll respond. We're not going to vote on that language today because the concepts we've already noted on when we approved the Finance Subcommittee recommendation, but when, so we're not going to vote on the language, but I just wanted to get it out there and walk you through it so you understood what it is you're parsing through. The the other new thing in this draft um relates to the the unwind provision, right? That's the other big new thing in here, and I think we should start with section fifteen, uh, which is the effective date new high school debt approval contingency, which is uh a more technical way of describing the unwind. So what this basically says is that the agreement takes effect as soon as a majority of the voters in the eight towns vote yes, if they do. The agreement takes effect. And we then get appointed, according to the provisions we've already voted on and agreed on, an appointed transition committee that's in place until November of twenty twenty four, when we have an elected transition committee replace the appointed transition committee. And just to remind everyone, the the transition committee members are elected district wide, just as school committee members are right now. And so the first time we can have an elected district committee is November twenty twenty four. So that's the reason why we haven't appointed one for a short period of time. So what this section says is the new district comes into effect as soon as that appointed uh transition committee uh is appointed. Um, no, sorry, the the new district comes into effect as soon as the votes are had in the eight-member towns. Uh, the transition period commences from the date of that approval through, in this draft, June of twenty twenty five. When the transition period ends, the existing district agreements terminate. The two districts, Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire dissolve, and the new district becomes fully operational. So during the, then it goes on to say during the transition period, the transition committee first, because in order to incur debt, the transition committee has to vote to incur debt, according to the provisions we've all talked about and agreed upon some time back. And the member town shall vote to approve the debt for the new high school in accordance with the terms of the agreement and the MSBA rules and regulations. in accordance with the terms of the agreement and the MSBA rules and regulations. And here's the unwind. Should the member towns fail to approve the debt for the new high school by January one, twenty twenty-five, the debt approval contingency, the transition period shall end, this agreement shall terminate. And the district shall dissolve. So that's the unwind. The district comes into existence when all eight members vote yes, member towns vote yes, if they do. And the transition period starts, but there's a debt approval contingency built into this agreement. So that if by that date, January one, twenty twenty-five, uh, there's not a positive vote on the debt for the new high school. Uh, the transition period ends, the agreement terminates and the new district dissolves. That's the concept. And before I open it up for discussion, I just want to go to the one other provision that we changed on page twenty-three, Jake.
Yep, right here.
Because if you have an unwind, right? Then you have to make sure that during that nine-month period, let's say it's a nine-month period before we have the vote on incurring the debt for the new high school, we have to make sure that our transition committee is building that same contingency into all the contracts that it's negotiating and committing the district to. So there's got to be a debt approval contingency in all the contracts the transition committee may be entering into during that nine-month period. And that's what this language says. So Jake, did I miss anything before I open it up for questions?
I think you got it right on the, nail it on the head. Perfect.
Okay. So, uh, Andy, I think your hand went up first. Andy? Inadvertent, okay. Uh, Don?
A question. You explained to me that under the state statute, uh, all the towns have to vote for the merger. And I'm wondering whether there's some way to deal with the problem of, for example, suppose all the towns voted for the debt except Alfred. Tiny, tiny Alfred. Does that of necessity have to bring this merger to an end? Or is there a possibility that there's some language that would permit us to go forward? For example, uh, the other towns agreeing to take on the debt? Um, or something? Um, that could be pursued with Desi.
Yeah, so it's, it's not the statute that requires all the towns. It's just a matter of contract law. So this is a, a new contract among the member towns and in order to bind a town to an agreement, a town has to agree. So, so there's nothing in the statute that says you can do this with fewer than all the towns, have a new regional agreement with fewer than all the towns. Now I've said before, and I don't want to go down this rabbit hole, but I've said before, you know, it's theoretically possible that if the town of Alfred said no to this agreement, the seven towns could then start talking about whether they want to do a seven-town uh, district, but we hope we will never get there, but I just wanted to put that out there before. Now, in terms of the debt vote, it's a very interesting point that you raised, Don, because you may remember that we had quite a bit of discussion. What section is this, Jake?
Pull it right up right now.
Okay, about, um, what methodology was going, there it is, what methodology we were going to use for incurring debt. So there are two different methodologies provided by statute. Sixteen D and sixteen N. So under sixteen D, is Russell still on? Under sixteen D, you need, um, a majority, uh, voting in favor in each town, right? Under six, sixteen. Sorry, under sixteen D. Help me out here, Jake. You need, um, I think that's right, a majority in each town, under sixteen N, right, under sixteen N. You need a majority district-wide, right? So, majority district-wide takes care of your problem, Don, right? If, if that's the methodology that is chosen uh, by the new school committee, sixteen N, then we don't have that offer, the, the possibility of offer vetoing this merger by saying no to the debt. So there, there is a way to address that. Uh, if the school committee votes that, or the way we've drafted this, if two-thirds of the school committee can't agree on sixteen D versus sixteen N, then we have a default written into this agreement, which is sixteen N, which is, uh, majority of the voters district-wide.
And, and, and are you saying that we can't take the language like that and put that in our, in our merger agreement? So that we decide? No, that's, so we decided rather than the school committee. Can we decide as, as, as our committee that two-thirds will do?
Two-thirds district-wide?
Yeah, can we?
On the, on the new school?
On the, yeah. Can, can we put that in our agreement? And if we can, uh, I would vote for that. I would move that if we can.
So you either, by statute, you either have to use D or N, unless you had special legislation to use their, their method, but the only two methods are the two that Lucy just described.
Russell, I think what, um, Don is asking is, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't do this as a matter of law, whether we could specify in our regional agreement that for the vote on the debt for the new high school, we are going to use sixteen N.
Oh, you definitely, you definitely can do that. I mean, I thought we listed it as all that. So unless the school committee votes by two-thirds vote to use the
Yeah.
N is what we listed as all.
Right. So, did you hear that, Don?
Um, I was trying to lower my hand. Uh, yes, if, if that's true. So I would check that with Desi, because i- if that's true, then I, I, I think we should amend our agreement to provide for that.
Okay, well, it's something to consider. Um, I think we sort of have uh, by making sixteen N the default. If two-thirds of the school committee can't decide between the two. But it is possible, we could change this language to say that it's going to be sixteen and on the new school vote. Now, Steve Bannon, are you still on? Is Steve still on?
Yeah, yes, I'm still on.
Uh, I remember when we were talking about this uh, early on, when we were talking about this provision and I, I thought you said that in the past Berkshire Hills has used sixteen D.
Yes, we have used sixteen D, hasn't been very successful in two out of three cases, but we have used sixteen D. I think sixteen N is, in my mind, not the school committee's mind, preferable. It's more of a, a weighted voting system, so the whole merger or the whole building i- in this case, doesn't go down the tubes by one town, especially a small town.
The, the problem with it, Don, as I see it um, is that we then are going to have the possibility of an objection by the smaller towns. Sort of a reemergence of the original objection by the smaller towns that well, now you're locking me in, right? So now I can't, I can't have a second bite at the apple, right? I don't, I don't have the ability to say no when we get to the debt approval vote. If the high school cost is much higher than was originally contemplated. And if that higher cost dramatically, in my mind as a voter, dramatically changes, um, what I think the economics are going to be for my town. So the sort of beauty from my perspective of the unwind and keeping, keeping the language as we have it as between sixteen N and sixteen D is that it gives people some comfort that they will have that second opportunity to take a look once the construction cost of the high school is determined.
Lucy, can I ask a process question?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have a fail-safe provision in this, right? What if Berkshire Hills wants to use sixteen N for the, if a, if a town, let's say Alfred, since Don brought it up, votes against it, so the merger fails, but the building passes in and Berkshire Hills wants to use sixteen N. How do we, are we going to be able to word it that way if that's what the school committee wants?
So wait a minute, when you say Berkshire Hills, are you talking about building a high school for just the three towns?
Correct, because the vote's gonna have to be worded such that
Yes.
The merger fails, so can, could Berkshire Hills decide?
Yeah, so if, if, if the, if the vote fails, Berkshire Hills is bound by the provisions of its regional agreement. And I don't have it right in front of, this agreement becomes irrelevant to what you can and cannot do at Berkshire Hills.
Lu- Lu- Lucy, I was just looking at this and talking with the Berkshire Hills attorney about it. In the Berkshire Hills regional agreement, it it, the default method is, is actually sixteen D.
That's what I remember.
But, but the school committee can switch to sixteen N with the same two-thirds vote you were talking about. So Berkshire Hills isn't locked into sixteen D, assuming that seven of the ten members voted to, to use sixteen N.
That's interesting, because that's not the way the agreement reads. Your agreement says, must I have an old version or something?
No, I, yeah, you say, you say, say what it says, but I, I spent a lot of time with an attorney yesterday on this and um, the, the opportunity to go from sixteen D to sixteen N is, is embedded in the the general laws, so that's the way the attorney explained it to me.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So does that answer your question, Steve?
It, it does. I, I think the wording of this is going to be tricky, but yes, it does.
Okay. But I, I just want to make clear that if, if the debt approval contingency isn't satisfied, right? If the vote goes down, this document becomes irrelevant to you at Berkshire Hills. You just go with your own regional agreement and, and the laws Peter Dillon just explained that.
No, I understand that. Thank you.
Uh, John, and then George?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just a quick question and then maybe a follow-up. The vote to create a new district, let's just pick a, let's just say it happens in the fall. I'm just throwing out a time. That vote is at a special town meeting and it is a uh, it a wa- a warrant article without a ballot measure, is that correct? It can be satisfied? Go ahead.
It's a warrant article, but the statute requires a printed ballot.
So there's going to be a printed ballot and a warrant article in the first vote?
Correct.
Okay, now we come to the debt vote. Is that require both a warrant article and a ballot, or is that just a ballot?
Russell, I think it's just a vote, but tell me if I'm wrong. Do you need, Russell, do you need a, a printed ballot for a vote on incurring debt?
Though, under N, I think there would be whatever ballot.
Okay.
And what about a debt exclusion? Say it again. What about incurring debt is one thing, a debt exclusion is another. I'm assuming that most of these towns or some of them anywhere are going to need a debt exclusion.
Yeah, I understand that it's a debt exclusion.
So that would be, so that would be a ballot. So I, so let me return to my original question. Is there going to be a warrant article for the debt? Or only a ballot or both? Okay, so here's the reason why I asked.
I could not hear Russell's response. He's echoing.
Don, could you hear what Russell said?
I think what he said was that the debt, the debt, well, wait a minute, the debt's got to require a ba- a ballot. So Russell, are you saying that the debt is a article? And the debt exclusion, but not the debt itself alone, is a ballot? So that, for example, all towns have to vote on an article to accept the debt, but only those towns that need a debt exclusion will have a ballot?
That's my understanding, but like I said, I'm school council, not town council. It's town council that deals with warrants. But from what I've seen in my town, from what I recall, we needed a warrant for the debt. And if there was a debt exclusion needed, then we had a ballot.
Okay. Okay, so the, the reason why I asked is, uh, I wanted to be sure that the second vote was not only a ballot, because then it would not be discussed at that town meeting. So what you're saying is the debt exclu- the debt will be discussed at the second town meeting. As an article, because if it's only a ballot, you can't discuss it as an article.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, but I could definitely, I could double check if somebody in this town.
Okay, the reason why I ask is I think it's very important that we don't have a second vote, which is only a ballot, because then no one will be able to discuss it at a town meeting. So tha- that's why I'm asking for the clarification.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll dig into that, John, and report back at our next board meeting.
Great, thank you.
Uh, George?
Thanks Lucy. Uh, and, uh, thank you, John, that, that's an important question you raised. Whether it's sixteen N or sixteen D as a voter, I'm confused. And so you're gonna have to deal with that, but uh, I, I, I do want to follow up on something you said, Madam Chairman. That the small towns are getting squeezed out here. Uh, whether it's D or N or any options in between, which I, I don't know about. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that the last time Berkshire Hills did uh vote on this, it wasn't at a. Town meeting, uh, it was just a simple ballot vote. Right, so I I agree, we need to do a little more research on this.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Okay, well, we will report back on that at the next meeting. I just wanted to get the language out to you. And start, you start thinking about it with the hope that we can. Put this issue and the language on the methodology. Um, to a vote at our next meeting, which is, what, when is it, Jake? July?
Eighteenth.
July eighteen. And also, I just wanted to encourage everybody. If there are other language issues in this draft, we're getting pretty close to final. And Desi has reviewed all of it except. The assessment methodologies, they just got that when you got it and they haven't looked at the um. Unwind provision yet. So we're gonna get input from them on that, I hope, next week. Uh, and be able to share that with you at our next meeting. But otherwise, we're really, really close. Um, to having a final agreement that would be ready for a vote at our next meeting. Peter?
Yeah, I know that we're running out of time tonight, but I just wanted to. Raise an idea that maybe we can discuss at the next meeting, and that is around the the. The duration of the transition period. Right now, as it stands, it's an eighteen month period that starts. At the time that all eight towns vote for the transition, for the regional agreement and. For July twenty twenty five, and I just wanted to raise the idea and see if there's any energy to discuss about the benefits of extending it a year to July. First twenty twenty six, and the reason why I'm raising it is that as I think through. The transition period. A longer. A longer duration would allow really almost a two-phase process for the transition. The first phase could be really focused on. The design of the new building and the program educational requirements that have to be determined to inform the design of the. Eight town high school, and then the second phase could really focus in on. Um, in a much more deliberate and uh in-depth way, the policy. And contractual shit uh requirements to be ready to merge, and so. Again, I I I don't want to, obviously, we don't have time to debate it now, but I I it it just strikes me of. Why are we constraining the transition period to just eighteen months, recognizing the amount of work? And typically, that is recommended, if not required by Desi, that in in situations where there isn't a new high school that has to be designed. Um, at the, you know, during that period, so I just wanted to to raise it as an issue for next time. And we can start just by seeing if there's any energy to discuss it, and if there isn't, you know, I'll set it aside.
Okay, thank you, and and Peter and I. Uh, batted that idea around, I think it was yesterday. Um, and I took a look at the relevant Desi regulation. Which, as it currently reads. Says the transition period can be no longer. Than the remainder of the fiscal year. In which the school committee is elected or appointed. Plus one additional fiscal year. So what we have drafted into the agreement now. Bumps up against that maximum transition period, so if there is energy and interest. In exploring this, we need to go back to Desi and ask, can you waive? This regulation, because the regulation as drafted now doesn't give us the ability. To have a transition period of two and a half years. Um, so I just want to put that out there that uh there there is this regulatory hurdle that we would have to. Uh, clear. If there were interest on the part of the planning board to extend out the transition period another year. So thoughts from folks on this? On Peter's idea? Nadine?
Well, I don't disagree with Peter at all, and I, you know, in my head, I'm thinking about how long is it gonna take for the new building to be built? I'm pretty sure it's gonna take longer than eighteen months. And. There's not really, in my mind, any rush. To get all the work done until we're ready to move all those high school students into the new building. Um, and I think about that transition team is gonna need. You you know, a a project manager to coordinate all the different balls, just like Jake has done with all of us, with all of our subcommittees. You know, they're gonna need, you know, some strong guidance and leadership to. To do everything they need to do in eighteen months is a pretty short. Period of time.
Steve?
Just based on how long it's taken us to get our work done.
Three and a half years. It'll be four years, you know, we could have all gotten another college education by the time this thing goes to a vote.
We have.
Didn't have to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for.
Steve?
Yeah, I agree with Peter and Nadine. I think it's worth looking at, I think. To ask Desi because of extenuating circumstances, the building project. And as Nadine points out, the building won't even be ready, so it's probably a really good reason to ask for an extension.
Susan?
Yeah, I'm in agreement too. I can't imagine this work being accomplished in eighteen months. Especially after this experience, so yes, we can extend it, please. Thank you.
Yep, Don?
I agree with Steve, Peter and.
Okay. I mean, obviously, the longer the transition period. The more the transition period is gonna cost, right? So maybe not a lot more, because maybe the work of the transition. Committee in those first nine months would be narrower. Right, focus primarily on the design of the new high school. And maybe the educational programming that's associated with that, but. You're gonna need administrative support, you're gonna need. A superintendent, maybe part-time. Uh, for a longer period of time, so we're gonna have three. School committees, three districts operating for another year. And so we have to just be mindful of that. It would allow less money, and I think this is part of what motivated Peter's suggestion. It would allow. For less money to be spent probably. In the transition period of the first nine months until we get past the debt approval contingency, because not everything. Has to be looked at in those first nine months. But aggregate cost, you're talking about a two and a half year period. Of having a transition committee and a a district. In existence, although not fully operational, as opposed to one and a half years, so just need to. Recognize that, I think. Bill?
Does the um extension of this period we've been talking about. In any way jeopardize the six percent bonus we get from this, we might get from the state for the merger?
It shouldn't. Yeah, it shouldn't. And I don't know if this extension is available, but it's something. That we've broached with Desi before. And it wasn't a hard no, there's no flexibility there, so it's something if there there and there does seem to be interest here. It it is something we should, we could go back to Desi on. Steve?
Yeah, to be clear, what I heard Peter saying, what I'm saying is I think we should look into it. We need to weigh the. Positives and the negatives and then make a decision. It seems like a good idea, but I I think we, as you pointed out, some of the drawbacks to it, I think we. We just need to take a deeper dive before we commit to it.
Okay. Don?
And we should couple that with where are we gonna get the money from? Because if we're gonna be asking Desi for it, then they have a real interest in whether it's a year and a half or two and a half.
I mean, there's a reason that they have a regulation that says the transition period can be no longer than. The remaining fiscal year and a year after that, so. But I, you know, I agree with Peter that um. The fact that we're designing a new high school makes this sort of a special circumstance, and the fact that we have. This unwind provision makes it a special circumstance, so. There's certainly good arguments to be made for a waiver if they feel they're capable of giving a waiver without. Rerating the regulation, which can't happen in a very short time. Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a possible funding source. Both districts get rural aid funds. It appears those numbers are gonna, or those. Allotments are gonna continue to go up year after year, and because we didn't get them in time for our budget process, to my knowledge. Uh, neither district has fully committed all those funds, so that that may be a place to to. Find some support i- if we need it.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm gonna take George, and then I'm gonna open it up for. Um, public comments. We've got one hand up in the public comment group.
Good, I I I really wanna go to the public comments, so I'll be very brief. And Peter's right, I just wanna say, um, we're not getting fundy, funding from Desi. To do that, we might get a waiver, but we're certainly not getting the funding, and I don't think we're gonna ask for. Um, if we seriously want a waiver.
Okay, um, Amanda, you have your hand up. I thought we were gonna go to public comments. Do you have something? You're you're muted. Sorry.
I'm wondering whether we have time to approve the minutes.
Oh. Thank you, Amanda.
I don't think we have time.
Yeah, we have time to approve the minutes. Let's do that before we go to public comments, so. Um, the May minutes were circulated before the last meeting, so. Um, I hope we can at least get those approved, and then we can look at the June sixth.
Motion to approve the May thirtieth minutes.
Yay, any discussion of the minutes? Okay, hearing then, I'm gonna do roll call vote. Chuck?
Yes.
Carl? Carl's gone, Jim's gone, George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter? Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Thanks, Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Bonnie? Uh, sorry, Nadine?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Is Michael still on? No. Um, Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andy?
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, and I'll take a motion to approve the June sixth.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Who was the second?
Andy.
Andy, thank you. All right, any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Deb? Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Bonnie, uh, sorry, Nadine?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andy?
Abstain.
And I'm a yes. All right, we'll we'll table the update so we can get to public comments, if that's okay with you, Jake? Is there anything you feel we need to absolutely address tonight?
No, the only comment I'll make is that. The amendment that Centermark put in. Is actually connected to rural aid. It was a carve out from rural aid to support regionalization efforts, so. Um, I I just wanted to mention that, and I really appreciate Peter. Uh, raising rural aid as a potential funding.
Great, um, so Sharon got moved over. She was in the public comment group, so Sharon, you're on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, one comment on the ninety ten a chart. Um, the whole chart is in M millions, but the seven Berkshire debt is in thousands K. I think that could be confusing, and in terms of optics, if you put everything into. In terms of millions, then it reduces the. Big number of what, three twenty-five, whatever, so. In terms of consist, kiss consistency and optics, I suggest to make everything M. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else? Among the attendees who'd like to make a public comment? All right, seeing no more hands up, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay, Marie gets to second that one. Good night, everybody. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned at seven thirty-eight. Thank you, everyone.
Night.